All right. I'd like to start the meeting, but uh my understanding is that Commissioner Barton is going to be joining us by Zoom.
Okay.
Okay.
This is the increase from the prime. This is what we're talking about. And this will be increased in the month.
But this is increasing my as a debt as a debt to the rate. That was what was thought approved in addition. It could have been a total of three different. It's but. Tax rate choosing. That's for. No revenue. That represents the new.
Mm hmm.
Publicly grow. Yeah, that does.
Brandon's really done stopped sending the link.
Yeah, I think he just did.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do you mean?
They couldn't stop anybody.
I don't I don't think you would be real happy if what you did.
Wow. They didn't they didn't lose.
That's right.
It is.
That's a happy win and a happy loss. Sure, Michael Parsons and Gary Young are pretty good.
Looks great. Brady food. Been great. You know, the dynasty football dynasty. You say it's up here.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
All right, I'm gonna uh call this meeting to order at nine oh eight. Uh, this is the uh September twenty ninth. In uh according to order, we have a forum. All the commissioners are present, including Commissioner Barton by Zoom. Are there any general announcements? Are there any public comments? Ronnie, I assume you want to talk during the public hearing part? Did you want to speak now or did you want to speak during the public hearing? Okay, you're going to speak on. Four agenda in total, what uh you have to set right by law.
That means that somebody only wants to speak in the half thirty minutes at all.
No, it's five minutes per individual.
Five minutes. That's better than normal. I'm not gonna talk that long. We're gonna talk about the tax rate. And I'm an old man, I've been here since nineteen seventy two, and it's always presented as the rate. If we're doing. This time, we're gonna take a house. A fictitious number of one hundred seventy three thousand. And then all the figures are based on that. Don't worry, I'm reading this. What the rate is. I'll go back to the January uh September ninth meeting, and it was also on the rate. So it's on topic. That. If you set the tax rate. Based on what y'all budgeted and you said you had a good budget, it was reasonable. And the first comment was, a proposal was made. To do it that way, and then they backed up. And the comment was made. Then well, we might as well set it at the highest rate we can set it, that the public does not have to give a bar. So you went back and we did. The proposal, and set it at the highest rate. If the taxpayers didn't have a say in. And y'all would find a way to spend the money. Well, that's the wrong approach. You're here to protect the people. And I'm gonna give you an example of what's happened in the past. Is we did that on Roder Bridge, and we included a ten cent tax. Because we were going broke. And was gonna have to file bankruptcy. So that commission, which wasn't all of you guys. Approved. The ten cent tax. It turned out that at the end of that year, we got three hundred eighty four thousand dollars left in the bank. Not spent, not committed. We didn't go broke. And we had the money coming in at ten cent rates. We're still collecting the ten cents. And. Every meeting that I've been in, that I've heard, and I haven't been in all of them. The Roder Bridge. Funds in each of. Y'all's areas individually. By personally, has about a million dollars left in there you can't spend. And the reason you can't is people can't supply the product. Well, that's a pretty good reason not to spend it. But that's the wrong reason. Why do we even have it in the budget and continue to let that million dollars grow in size? You haven't come up with a plan to buy forty different vehicles or pieces of equipment. So you could use it. Throughout the year. Why don't you cut it half and set up a unit system and have a director. Over. The road bridge. And do away with y'all having any sense of it at all, except through the director. That's the approach. But I've gone through five states that tried to that. Where I worked. None of them worked as a unit system. It was as bad, if not worse. Than what you have, what we have right now. So there's solutions to be had. Throughout. This area. But I don't know. And the agenda is supposed to give an idea to the people that's in here. All wanted to be. What you're gonna talk about? Well, you're talking about that, but you're using different figures than normally you do. Now, what are we trying to add? Or we're trying to do the September tenth? Here, I've set the highest rate you can set, and then you'll spend the money? I disagree with that approach. You take care of the people. That's what your job is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ronnie. All right, we will now uh are there any other public comments? If not, we will now enter into a public hearing on the proposed tax rate for twenty twenty five. Uh, notice has been published in the paper. I'm gonna read this notice for those that that have not seen it. Where is it? I'm throwing them on here. Let me borrow this one. Okay. A rate of point three nine nine six oh per hundred dollars valuation has been proposed by the governor and body of Van Zand County. The proposed tax rate of point three nine nine six oh per hundred dollars. The no new revenue rate is point three uh seven six five one two per hundred dollars. The voter approval rate is point uh four one seven six eight one per hundred dollars. The no new revenue rate for uh for the twenty twenty five tax year that will raise the amount of property. Tax revenue for Van Zand County and from properties in both the twenty twenty four tax year and the twenty twenty five tax year. The voter approval rate is the highest rate that Van Zand County may not without holding an election to seek voter approval of the rate. Proposed rate is greater than the no new revenue tax rate. This means Van Zand County is proposing to increase property taxes for the twenty twenty five tax year. The public hearing on the proposed tax rate will be held September twenty ninth, twenty twenty five at nine AM in the Van Zand County courtroom. One twenty one East Dallas Street, room two oh four, Canton, Texas. The proposed tax rate is not greater. Than your voter approval tax rate. As a result, Van Zand County is not required to hold an election. At which voters may accept or reject a proposed tax rate. However, you may express your support for opposition, support or for or opposition to the proposed tax rate by. Contacting the members of the uh county clerk or Van Zand County at their uh commissioners court. Of Van Zand County. At their offices or by attending public hearing mentioned above. Uh. Your taxes owed under any of the tax rates mentioned above can be calculated as follows. It's a property tax amount. Uh uh times the taxable value of your property divided by one hundred dollars. About one hundred, not hundred dollars. Uh, I'm going to read the second page, but uh not the third. Again, it's published in the Camp Herald. Uh, last week, uh. So uh of the total tax rate, I'm gonna read from the table. Following table compares the taxes imposed on the average resident homestead by Van Zand County last year. To the taxes proposed to be imposed on the average residence homestead by Van Zand County this year. Uh, the total tax rate for a hundred dollars of value in twenty twenty four was point four zero five eight six nine six. And for twenty five, it's point three nine nine six oh. The proposed rate is point zero zero six two seven zero less. Than the previous year, which is a one point five percent decrease. All right, home value, average homestead value in twenty twenty four. Uh, taxable uh average taxable value of a residence was one hundred sixty three thousand seven hundred seventeen. In twenty twenty five, the average taxable value of resident homestead, it was one hundred and seventy three thousand two hundred and seventy five. So in a summary, is twenty twenty five had an approximate uh increase of five point eight four percent in the average taxable value of a residence. Homestead from twenty twenty four. Next is the tax on average homestead. In twenty twenty four, the amount of taxes on the average taxable value of a resident homestead was six hundred and sixty four dollars and forty eight cents. Twenty twenty five, the amount of taxes on average taxable value was uh tax, average taxable value of a resident homestead. Was six hundred and ninety two dollars and forty two cents. Therefore, the increase of approximately twenty seven point nine three or four point two percent increase. And then the total tax levy on all properties. So levy in twenty twenty four is twenty million one hundred and twenty nine thousand nine hundred uh ninety six dollars. And twenty twenty five is twenty two million uh forty three thousand eight hundred and fifty four. So the proposed tax rate for twenty twenty five will generate approximately one million nine hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred fifty eight. In more revenue than twenty twenty four or approximately uh nine point five one percent. So that's the summary of the tax notice that went out. Okay. So now I have a. Uh, just just to let you know is. A clarification uh the the no new revenue rate uh. I miscalculated when I went through and did this because I I didn't quite understand the sheets, worksheets that we got. I used what I what I. Uh, believed to be correct, and I got confirmation that that point two nine nine. Uh, six two two was the uh voter approved tax rate for the M and O rate. But actually, it was not. Uh, it was higher than that, uh roughly by uh the total. Voter approved tax rate, including Roder Bridge, was point four one seven six eight one. Uh, making the M and O at point. Three one nine nine three six. So we did our calculations based on point two nine nine six. And that came in at a roughly an increase. Uh, it says one point nine million on the tax rate notice and my calculations here, taking out. The uh. Uh, the provision for delinquent taxes, which is about three percent, is roughly a uh one point five three eight million dollar increase. Over uh the prior year. And with the adjusted uh or the actual voter approval rate of point three one nine nine three six. Uh, the the the. Amount of increase would actually be three million one hundred thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty. So uh. We have roughly, we have uh. Taken uh well, because of my miscalculation in there, uh we have basically set adopted the the rate we adopted. Is basically right in between the no new revenue rate and the voter approved rate at one point five million. So um. And again, that was my error, and I did not discover that until I started putting numbers into the tax uh uh. Truth and taxation forms to start generating some of these notices, and that's when I I discovered that. That um and it's my apologies. So that being said. Is there any any public comments from the commissioners about the proposed tax rate? I would also like to note uh to set or uh. Uh, establish that uh. Last year. We came before the uh in our public meeting to talk about uh. Adopting a tax rate, and we put out a public hearing notice. That we're going to go to point four two nine oh one nine. And that was the rate that we put out in the notice. That's the rate that we advertised. And in the meeting, uh the commissioners decided that they wanted to keep the tax rate the same. Instead of increasing into point four two, and it was changed to uh the uh. The same tax rate as the previous year in in that. So I don't know if we're we're obligated to this rate that we proposed or. Not. In that regard. Precedent is that that was changed last year. So.
So basically, what you're saying is, is that we didn't take the the top um the the top voter approved rate that would allow us to to. Uh, tax at the highest level and then just figure out how to spend that money. Is that is that what you're saying? Is it we're not doing that?
That is correct.
So we're we're taking a tax rate that is uh nearly two cents less than what our top tax rate could have been?
Uh, one and a half cents, I think.
Yep.
One and a half cents, which is uh a million five after deductions or after the uh. Estimated delinquency rate. It's one point uh one million five hundred seventy three thousand five hundred and eighty five dollars less. Uh, our rate that we have proposed. Uh, is less than that amount than what we could have proposed.
So we had six hundred and sixty four thousand uh in new revenue from new from either changes uh in uh say, taking something off ag and. Putting a house on it or taking something out of a uh just a vacant lot and putting a commercial business on it. Six hundred and sixty four thousand dollars of additional revenue?
Uh, that is correct. That's mostly new new revenue from uh new buildings, most of them.
So it sounds like that uh that while this is a this is a modest increase, it it was not the top rate that could have been. Uh, could have been taxed without without approval from the voters.
That is correct.
It's what it's what it looks like to me.
So are we, this is my first budget process. Are we to assume that we start out our budget process? Assuming that we're gonna go the highest that we can?
Well, when we started out our budget process, we had no idea what the tax rates were gonna be.
Or what was. Or what was assessed or what what evaluations were, whatever.
We we did have the evaluations. The only tax rate we could use was the one the current tax rate, but we had no. Um, it wasn't until we were required to file our budget on July thirtieth. And uh we did not get a tax rate information until the first of August or the um week after.
Is that by state law?
Uh, I believe it's by state law that we have to file the budget by the thirtieth. So we have since fine tuned the budget uh in in that regard.
So we have to, we have to come at it at it kind of in a disjointed way.
Yeah.
It makes no sense.
It's broken.
And I uh I would like to point out to and uh to to some some people who see an inconsistency because. It is the law on how we are supposed to report it. In this tax rate notice about the tax rate. Uh, we are showing that that's an increase uh well, this is flashing. Now. Says an increase of roughly uh. One uh one point nine million and that uh. An increase on the average uh taxable value of residents of about twenty seven. Uh, dollars and ninety three cents or four point two percent. However, when you go and look at the required by tax code notice. Of what we have to put in or uh not tax code, but the uh. Government code. Uh, we have to put in what the the amount of the increase is based on. A hundred thousand dollar home. So and in that, it's roughly on a hundred thousand dollar home with the tax rate from last year. And then a hundred thousand dollars on a tax rate for this year, and because the tax rate's lower, it shows that we have a decrease. Uh, in in the taxes, and so and that's because of the way that we were required to report it. So. It's a it's very confusing in in many regards. But uh anyway, I just want to point that out.
And that requirements in the Texas government code?
Uh, yes, sir.
So last year, you prepared a budget. Based upon what you thought was gonna be the highest. Voter approved tax rate you could do. Right. Y'all worked on a budget, and then you got and then you. And then you got to this point. And you lowered your budget. You lowered basically your income by because you didn't go up to that. You kept the taxes the same.
Uh.
You kept the tax rate the same when you got to this point. Instead of going up.
Correct.
You didn't go up. But you didn't change your budget.
That is correct.
How'd you do that? How can you do that if, I mean, like, so you had excess in your budget last year somewhere?
Right.
Or did you start out in the red?
The logic behind it. And I just watched the video.
I'm not trying to be accused of it. I'm trying to understand what happened.
I'm I'm hitting there.
Okay.
The logic, and I just watched the video from last year. It was September eleventh when we approved the tax rate. And the logic was, we had too much money in our general fund, and we needed to spend some of it per the auditor. Therefore, we budgeted uh two and a half million dollars into the red. Now. Okay, and that was last year. Now, uh and this is what the predicament was when we go into our budget later is. We start the year out this year at two and a half million dollars in the red.
Correct. And then. As we started out that way. Evaluations went down. A million and a half dollars worth of revenue.
Mm hmm.
So we actually started out. Four million dollars in the red. Just to some degree. We weren't in the red, but.
The valuations did go down, but actually the taxable valuation did not. The taxable valuation. Went up about six hundred thousand or six hundred million dollars. But the valuation did go down, but if you look at the taxable valuation, uh it went up uh between the years.
Somewhere in one of those meetings, I understood that we had that we had lost about a million and a half dollars worth of revenue. Not the new, not the new revenue, but like the existing revenue that we had that we had lost a million and a half there, and we. I I thought when we went into the budget process, and it's on me because I'm trying to get my mind wrapped around it, but I thought that we started out. Almost four million dollar less than what we had last year. Was I right? Am I right or wrong on that?
I don't I I don't know.
Am I right? Well, let me ask you this. I haven't had a word this. Am I right for presuming? Was I wrong even for like? Was my train of thought right on that? I mean, I put those numbers together, and I thought we're about three point nine less than what we started out with last year. That's what it, that's what it's what it seemed to me.
Could the difference, could the difference be that, and and I don't know, um but could the difference be that when we compiled everything that the department heads were asking for this year, we were four and a half million dollars behind?
I just thought that the baseline, what we started with, the revenue.
Dollar for dollar?
Dollar for dollar. I thought, golly, we've, you know, we started out in the red, and then we I thought we started out in the red. Well, I just told that, and then somewhere in the budget process, I thought I heard, and our revenue went down.
Hmm.
Because of, partly because of where I live out there, like the, but then then we got to looking at it. Brandon said that. They fluctuated pretty bad all over the county.
Untaxable rates, I mean, on valuation?
Yes, so.
And that was my assumption too, that that is down, but if you look at the numbers here, which I took off of the sheets that we get from the appraisal district. The actionable assist valuation of five point five billion dollars was uh uh an increase of the four point nine billion from twenty twenty five. Unless I just got that wrong, but I don't believe I got that wrong. So uh. But yes, there there was uh, it was my understanding too, when we started that the taxable back, I think. Because it fluctuate, it wasn't. Because it fluctuate, wasn't consistent throughout the county, the fluctuations kind of offset each other, those went down, those went up.
But it's not unreasonable to assume that, that values would go down, we came off of an incredible high in the real estate market. And as, as interest rates change, things go on the market and they won't sell at the price they would sell for a year, two years ago. So valuations do go down just based on the real estate market.
Hmm.
There was just no consistency with it. From what I saw.
Correct.
And I, I was informed that in one community that went down significantly, it was due to one major land sale. That affects all the surrounding properties, so I don't know.
I mean, I would like to come into the court next year and say, we just presume from the get go, we're not raising taxes and work off a budget that's off that line. And then if we get to the end of it and we're in a deficit, then we might have to raise taxes, but I don't like the idea of coming in and saying. And I'm not griping, but I am, but I don't know how to straighten it out, like. We start out, we don't know how much money we're gonna get to work with and then we started with raises. And in my simple mind, I'm thinking we start with basic things that we can't do without. And we fund those and then we work off from that out, out, and the average person would say that's probably how you would do it. You have to fund the sheriff, you have to fund Roden Bridge, I mean, there's certain, there's certain things, there are mandates that we have to fund, those things, we have to fund those things.
And some would say that funding, one, one of those imperatives that we have to fund are good people to do the jobs that, that we need to get done.
Understand that.
I mean that.
Yes.
Makes it very difficult because where is the slack, where is the extra?
I just, I just haven't had those people come to me and say. I want y'all to give a raise and even if we have to raise taxes, I haven't had, I haven't had a mob come to my office and say, I demand that y'all buy the property, I haven't. But I have had people say, y'all need to be, y'all are the conservative party. So prove that.
People. I think we did prove that by not getting the voter approval rate we met in the middle.
It was accident. Brother. He said it was, but we have the right to do what we want to right here, like we can change that if we wanted to, we could say, I mean, they did it last year.
Right.
Right, so if you don't go up on it, you're saying we're gonna stay with this where we're at, that's right, that would be, you'd prove that, we are, we would be conservative.
Well.
This is, I'm just telling you where my heart is and where my people's heart, what I'm hearing from my people, I'm not, I'm not arguing with the court, I'm just telling you. Mr. Jones says we're to represent the people, so I'm telling you what my people in precinct one tell me.
Well, nobody wants to pay higher taxes, but everybody calls, when they, when they call in, um, they're saying. We have, we have uh divots and holes in our roads, we have uh water that's standing on the roadways. They are, i- in effect, they are asking, they are saying, we want you to use responsibly those dollars that you collect. And so we have to.
On the sheriff, um which means more deputies, which is more money. I mean, like Cliff is saying, with the roads and then go to the sheriff's department, you know, more deputies, less response time, which is what they ask for.
Yeah, what I understood about the sheriff's office was that that was funded, they just couldn't fill those spots. In prior years, yeah, so the funding was there, it's just they couldn't fill the spots.
Cause they were returning that.
They were returning that money back into the general fund. I just think that, I just think that our, my mindset's gonna be from now on. I'm gonna start with a baseline. And then if we get to the end of it and we can't fund what we're supposed to fund, then we'll have to do something, but I, and I. That's how I run my home. And I know the government's not, the government's different than our home, but.
Back, back on what Cliff was saying there about the people calling in about the, the potholes and stuff like that. I have a lot of those, those phone calls about the roads. And now I'm not saying I have a lot of people that says this, but I've had several to tell me that they don't mind paying more taxes if we could fix their roads. You know, and you know, I mean, there's, like you're saying, there's a balance there, but, but at the same time, when, when you get. Thirty, forty phone calls a day complaining about roads, there's only one way to fix them roads.
That's right.
That's more money, I mean, if you don't have the money, you can't fix.
I, I like the idea of allowing the public, are we just talking to?
Yeah.
I just have, I like the idea of having the public, giving the public the opportunity. To do a road bond instead of us just raising their taxes. I mean, I, you know, even, even you had talked about like you found a loophole where you're, you're actually, your precinct could do a, a bond.
Well, I've been told that there is a, there, there is a way that the, the people can come before us. And do just for your precinct. You know, where if we do a, if we do a countywide for road. Bond, then that's split between the whole county.
Yes.
You don't, you don't get. More for each, the way I understand it, you don't get more for like precinct three or precinct one or whatever, it's, it's kind of divided equally.
And I wa, the reason I brought up the road bond was not because I want to talk about roads, I want to talk about giving the power to the people to make decisions with big purchases. I want them to have that power, not just us, like when we get to a place where we're outside the realm of just average government. The people should have the power to vote those things in, not just us, does that make sense to you? If, if they want to pay, if your people say, I don't mind paying more taxes and the whole county is like, we would just be glad to have good road, we'd pay more taxes. Then let them specify where their money goes, put a bond before them and say, we'll do this, you know, we, fifteen years ago, I think it was or two thousand and fifteen, we had the. Survey done of all our roads and it was gonna be fifty million dollars to fix them and. Ninety million, okay, I'm sorry. Where I came up with that fifty, but anyways, that wouldn't touch it now, like that wouldn't touch it now, but if, if we were gonna do something that large. And I think we're all in agreement, then we allow them to have a say in that much money that's, is gonna raise their taxes. We are a representative government. And we're a republic and the power is in people's hands, it happens every four years, every two years really now, but. So I, that's just my thoughts on it, um. When I started, when I looked at this and I, and I looked at, thought we were four million dollars in the hole as far as we started, that's when we. When we began the process and I looked, I thought, y'all, we're, we're starting out in a hole.
Well, the, the first budget that we had numbers for and the, and the actual revenues, uh it was three point five million.
Correct.
That, that, that's where I came back and said, we gotta cut, we gotta do something.
And I did, like I started.
Everybody did.
Yeah, I know, it's like.
And we got it, we got it down to a manageable level, basically a balanced budget. And I'm very proud of what all the work that the department's done and you guys have done to get us there, I'm comfortable with this tax rate. And with the budget that we got right now, because I think it's uh fiscally conservative and um uh. You know, I mean, we didn't uh, we cut a lot of, a lot of stuff out that, that remaining and but. Yet we will still have money contingency that is available to us in instances where we have situations where we, we didn't account for in the budget. Well, weren't able to account for because they weren't anticipated.
So, don't you think that's great though, that we started out assuming that we'd probably go to the voter, voter approval rate? And we didn't on accident and we still have enough to, for contingency, isn't that?
I mean partly, but I mean, I think there are some, there's a contention of the, of the population that believes two things. They believe that we should not cut Roden Bridge, that those funds should not ever be reduced and number two and uh. Is that, that you can, you can throw uh millions of dollars at a problem if it's not done right. Then those are, those are monies that's, that's wasted and, and so we need to determine what's the right way to accomplish the tasks that are before us. And to, to do the things that we need to do, but have the money spent wisely and that's really. Two key areas. And I think we can find those, I think we can find. How does each precinct address the road issue in their particular precinct with their particular soil uh and, and get uh. Cut ditches that don't cave back in and I put a, a note out and I said, hey, we're gonna cut ditches, how do we do this? What do we do to keep the sand from blowing and these ditches from just filling back in? Somebody said, there's thatched uh hay that you can put along those ditches that will keep those from flying eye all over the place.
Idrum Walton.
And. I'm, I mean, the, the people out there, we have, we have expertise in the county that can help us do the things that need to be done. I don't know roads nearly as well as you or Bobby do, I, but I have other strengths. But I count on you guys when there are equipment issues or there's stuff coming up, I count on my road foreman, I count on those guys that are out there. Cutting the ditches in precinct two and, and cutting the grass and, and cutting the trees back. So we all can do our part and there are people in the county that can help us manage these problems and keep them from being a crisis.
So are we ready to move forward on adopting a tax rate? If so, uh somebody, this is the wording that we have to use, who wants to make the motion?
Should we close the public hearing?
Oh, that's, that's a good idea, thank you for using me uh on track. Uh with that, at uh nine forty five, we will close the public hearing, which is item number four on proposed tax rate. And we will move on to item number five, discuss, consider option, adoption of the twenty twenty five tax rate for Manza County and setting. An order setting the tax rate uh and, and a median. Value in homestead property valued at one hundred and seventy three thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars would pay a proper tax of approximately. Six hundred and sixty four dollars and forty eight cents for the current fiscal year, six hundred and ninety two, forty two, forty one and property tax under proposed budget, twenty twenty six budget. And six hundred and fifty two, fifty, forty, I'm sorry, six hundred dollars, six hundred and fifty two dollars, forty cents property tax under no revenue rate. So. All right, I think we, we've done all the discussion, if there's a, a motion, this is the actual language, if somebody wants. That we need to read right there, this, this is the language that I was talking about, um. That uh, this is what the tax code requires us to read, which is uh that the property uh tax rate will be decreased. By the adoption of a tax rate of point three nine nine six oh, which is effectively a four point zero eight percent increase in the tax rate, so. It's, makes no sense.
So moved, as his reading.
All right, and the tax uh and uh, and the tax rate includes zero dollars for ta, uh debt services as a reminder of. The county is not uh incurred and has not have any debt. So.
Yeah, I would move uh as you read it.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Williams, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we will now go into a uh voice vote and uh Mitch, Mitch Curtis, Commissioner Curtis?
Reluctantly, yes.
All right, uh Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Barton?
Yes.
And myself, yes, and so we have now uh uh adopted a tax rate. For uh our next fiscal year of point three nine nine six of the zero. Okay? And uh I need y'all to sign, sign this tax, oh, that's the wrong one, because it's printed on two sides. That's what I mean. All right. And that moves us to item number six, that's adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both like sign, motion passes, thank you very much. Thank you, Brendan.
Where's he at? Buckeyes in uh.
Now the nation's capital. Bo had a football game here.
Ah.
We came to it.
Awesome. All right.
All right.
Thank you much, everybody.